So I would like to call the regular meeting of the Temple City Council, May 5th, 2020, to order. Before I call for roll call, however, I'm going to go ahead and read my little script here that pursues section three of effective order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via telecom, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. So also, I would like to remind those who are calling in that your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendaized item discussion. Email your request to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item that you wish to provide comment. So with those, I will now call the meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. All right. Of course, these things happen from time to time. I've got it. I forgot my invocation in the other room. I'm going to run and get it real quick. So give me, give me 30 seconds.
Okay.
Okay, back. Sorry about that. Okay, so we will begin with our invocation. If everyone will join me in prayer. Loving God, your desire is for our wholeness and well-being. We hold it in tenderness and prayer, the collective suffering of our world at this time. We grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We ache for ourselves and our neighbor standing before an uncertain future. We pray may love, not fear, go viral. Inspire our leaders to discern and choose wisely, aligned with the common good. Help us to practice social distancing and reveal to us new and creative ways to come together and in solidarity. Please continue to guide us, Lord. We place this meeting in your hands. Amen. And so Phil, all, thank you. We'll all stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and start. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for which one nation, one reason, and that is just this for all. Thank you. That was fair of that. So now we will move back to the agenda, and we will start with our circular math. We have one presentation this evening, as I mentioned earlier, regarding the older American proclamation. Now, before we go to Adam Matsumoto, our Parks and Recreation Director, I would read the proclamation, and then I believe Adam has a short video for us. So reads as follows. Older Americans Month, make your mark. Whereas the city of Temple City includes a growing number of older Americans who make countless contributions to our community every day, and whereas the city of Temple City is stronger when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to make their mark. And whereas the city of Temple City recognizes the importance of the physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being of its citizens, and whereas the city of Temple City can support our community members by promoting independence, inclusion, and participation, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and connecting people with opportunities to share their time, experience, and talents. Now therefore, I, Tom Chavez, as mayor, half of the city council of Temple City, do hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to recognize older adults, people who support them, as essential members of our community. And I would just add, please keep them and will. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Adam Matsumoto, who I believe has a short presentation to make. So Adam, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the city council. We have a short video that we would like to show honoring our 2020 Temple City Older American of the Year, who is this year James Ponnet. He's a 30-plus-year volunteer dedicating 20 to 30 hours a week, providing rides for our older population to medical appointments, meetings, to church, special events, anything you can name, he's there to provide that support. He's also served as our unofficial Temple City Santa Claus for over 20 years, being present at our events, making appearances at local hospitals and senior homes as well. It's truly an honor for us to honor Mr. James Ponnet as our 2020 Temple City Older American of the Year. And I will start our video. Thank you so much, Mayor Chavez. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for putting that together. And I notice thanks Jerry Jambezi for many of those photos, I'm sure. Just real quick, Adam, you'll, I'm assuming this will be provided to Mr. Ponnet as well, or he's maybe already seen it.
Yes, we have reached out to Mr. Ponnet to let him know that we were making the presentation this evening at the council meeting. We'll also be having a, an own, his own page dedicated on the city website, just giving a brief background of his volunteerism in the community. We'll have the video up as well on the city's YouTube page for, for all to visit and enjoy. And we were notified by Los Angeles County that the typical recognition, county-wide recognition that would normally happen in May, is planning on being postponed at this moment in October. So we will, in the future, have that celebration to recognize Mr. Ponnet.
Good. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring him to a council meeting in the future and thank him personally. And I think we all know James, and you know, before all this started, I would see him over on the corner of, of, is it First Avenue and Freer directing, doing the crosswalk guard. So I would wait once in a while to him by. So very nice individual, and congratulations to him and his family as well. So, okay, great. All right. So we will now move on to item number six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. And Ms. City Clerk, I understand you have at least one email request to speak. And we'll allow you to read that. For those who are calling in, we will now unmute your microphones in order to avoid callers speaking. Other, please state your name so that you can be added to the public comment list. City Clerk will call upon you when it is your turn to comment. Please be reminded that you have up to three minutes to speak. So I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one email public comment, and it's from Temple City Library Manager Jing Lee. States, "Good evening, Mayor Chavez and City Council. The Temple City Library would like to reach out and offer our services and affirm our commitment to providing useful resources and services to the community during these unprecedented and difficult times. We would like to highlight the following resources for the community: Digital library cards. While our libraries are closed due to COVID-19 precautions, we want to make our digital resources more easily available to the public. Sign up for a temporary digital card valid for 90 days to access all of our digital resources, including eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, movies, TV, homework help, online classes, and more. Once you fill out the request form online, you'll receive an email with your library card and PIN number within one business day. So far, the county library has issued more than 20,000 digital library cards and still receiving more requests. Virtual Storytime. Monday through Thursday at 11:00 a.m. and 3:30 p.m., you can visit the county library's Facebook page and watch live stream storytimes that include songs and read-alongs. Online Spring and Summer Discovery Program. Log, logbooks, logbooks you read, write, and review complete online activities. Earn points and prize. The discovery program is for all ages. We encourage the whole family to participate. And lastly, while the library is physically closed to the public, we're available via phone or email, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to provide reference assistance. Our phone number is 626-285-2136. The county library's website is https://lacountylibrary.org. Best, Jing Lee. Thank you, Mayor."
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee, for that information. Do we have any other requests to speak at this time? Hearing none, I propose public comments, and we'll now move on to item seven, our consent calendar. All consent items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Chavez, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any objection? We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to item number eight, public hearing. There is none. Unfinished business, there is none. And we will now move on to item 10. Item 10A, additional community development block grant funds resulting from the coronavirus aid relief economic security act. I believe we are going to have a presentation by Associate Planner Gillick. So, Mayor Chavez, if I may, for just a moment, there was a small discrepancy between the agenda and the posted item. There is no recommendation from the, from the staff as to what program to recommend. So this is an open discussion for all of you to consider what programs you feel are fit for the community. So the staff report has the correct recommendations, which dispelled what, getting direction from the city council, just to clarify. And sorry for that discrepancy. Okay, thank you. And I believe we all got that change on the agenda as well. So, okay. We'll go ahead with the report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else on the line. Presenting regarding the additional CDBG funds that the city will be getting as part of the CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. A little background, on March 27th, President Trump signed the CARES Act resulting in new CDBG funds. And on April 7th, the city was informed by the LA County Development Authority, also known as LACDA, that the city would be receiving $123,206 on coronavirus relief programs. The LACDA did provide some guidance on enhancing existing programs, and then also staff looked at, looked at other programs that nearby cities were considering funding with the new, with the new funds. But the first program that staff looked at was the Temporary Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This program would be easily to implement. LA County, LACDA staff has already shared the program guidelines with staff. There's already some help. People have received or will be receiving their stimulus checks. And also, the city council has recently passed the eviction urgency ordinance, but that only delays rental payments for up to six months. The rent is not forgiven. And then the, that type of program would also allow residents to remain in the city. The next program that staff looked at is the COVID-19 drive-up mobile testing program. The program does have a high startup cost. City of Baldwin Park in Alhambra already have programs, will be starting programs. The minimum costs, their programs will be $261,000. That would be the minimum staffing that would be required to operate the site, but it could go as high as up to $300,000, depending on how many staff members would be there from the private company that they're contracting with. Using kind of the same rates, those cities received, using the same company program, instituting a program in Temple City would be approximately 132, or 153,000. And then also, recently, LA County, a few weeks ago, or I believe last month, they mentioned that they're opening several mobile testing facilities throughout LA County. There are five actually that are located within 10 miles of Temple City, and the closest one, the closest one being at the El Monte Airport. The next program that staff looked at is the, is assisting small micro-business programs. There are some limitations to the program. The businesses would need to have low-income employees, and there would be some documentation that would be required to demonstrate that. The county already has a similar program in place. The Temple City businesses can participate in. And additionally, the president signed a COVID-19 relief package that includes the paycheck protection program for small businesses, which continues, which allows them to continue to pay their employees. The next program is the enhancing the existing housing rehabilitation program. LACDA, their information recommended providing some outreach through other programs such as meal deliveries. The city does not have a CDBG-funded meal delivery program. And then also, the city has had kind of a steady number on the waiting list. Currently, we have 18 people right now. They have averaged anywhere from 15 up to 30 in the past several years. You're on the waiting list. One other additional item that was recommended by LACDA was a grant to install high-speed, high-speed internet or to subsidize monthly internet service. The number, the figures that we saw or that we found online, it was $100 to install high-speed internet. Also, just given that schools are closed, high-speed internet, a lot of the companies are providing a free service for low-income households with students. And then also, some of the existing providers are already provide a low-income, a low-income program that will provide service for households that is less than $20 a month. Also, enhancing the youth scholarship program. They've recommended doing online tutoring or virtual classes, paid programs. The city is already doing free online programs. One other suggestion was doing a grab-and-go activity packets, reprogramming funds to purchase equipment or supplies in the, for that program. And then also, the LA County is also providing, offering free online homework help at the moment. Sorry. So additional funds, CDBG funds for this fiscal year could be used on the COVID-19 relief, the youth scholarship program. We're estimating there's anywhere from 16,000 to 17,000 that could be used on programs that will be available soon. The city can also use these funds to supplement the funds that are part of the CARES Act, or we could use these funds on the next fiscal year. Staff will be, is recommending to come back next month to consider modifying the next fiscal year's budgets to supple, further supplement the COVID-19 relief funds. And then without the recommendation to request that the city council direct the city manager to issue a public hearing notice allocating these new CDBG funds as part of the CARES Act. Just kind of a side note, typically, when creating a new CDBG program, the notice is typically 30 days. The CARES Act has actually reduced it down to only five days and doesn't require a city council action. I believe this is just, the federal government just wants the money to, to get out there to assist people as soon as possible. And then the, the last recommendation is to direct staff to return next month to reevaluate, reevaluate whether the city should modify next year's CDBG fiscal year programs. And that is, I'm done with my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with questions. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Mann first, if you have any question, or Associate Planner Gillick.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor Chavez. I do have a question, just for clarity. Were discussing specifically the additional $123,000 of CDBG funds? We're not, are we discussing the remaining balance as well, or is it just, is the question really, what are we going to do with the $123,000? I just want to ask as, as a point of clarity.
The direction tonight would just be to which program or programs to allocate for this $123,206 that you're receiving.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And my next question is, with regards to the Temporary Rental Assistance Program, the staff report mentions that the county is offering the related program. If we were to establish one, are we essentially adopting the county of LA program, or are we going to be creating one from scratch ourselves?
We would be creating a new program, but we would primarily be using the county's guidelines to help us out. It might just be an easy way to, to get programs established. If we're creating our own from scratch, then there might be a lot of back and forth with the county staff to make sure that it complies with the CDBG regulations.
Okay. And I asked that because it references that the county program offers $1,000 per month for three months for renters. And so I'm just looking at $123,000. If we did something like that, you know, how many people would actually be impacted or can take advantage of such funds? So, so I presume that one, that sort of a note for the $1,000 per month for three months is probably something we would adopt as a guideline if we were to go in that direction? Is, is that correct?
Yeah, we could do that. I think Alhambra, their program that they were looking at, they had two different amounts. I think one was for low income, and I don't remember if it was 750, and then 500 for moderate income households. But basically, it's up to council, however, we would want to establish the amount or who would be eligible for that, the funds.
Okay. And just, it's roughly, how much time would it take to set up something like that and for the monies to actually reach people who may need it?
I would guess that it could probably take maybe three weeks. I think it depends on, on the county because they need to create the program, and there's some, some contracts and agreements that, that we need to sign as well with them after those are created.
Okay, so it would be tied to the county, county's process?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you. I have no more questions.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions at this time?
I do have, William, you were speaking specifically for the rental program, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay. I'm interested in the possibility of doing either 12, $10,000 small business loans, or maybe even $5,000 business loan. But what I'm wondering is, I know, Adam, you made reference that the county, there was these small business loans available from the federal government to the state. And I mean, even with the second wave, I've heard from a handful of our business owners who said that the, the process, they can't even get the process going because they're kicked out of the website or what have you. But I know in Temple City in the last probably six to eight months, we had at least four or five new small businesses that have opened. And those are the ones also that are struggling to get any assistance with the small business loan. So when you said that it's available through the county, they also have small business loans, but it seems, nobody seems to be able to access them.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I'm not familiar with their program. I just know that it is available. We could certainly reach out to the LACDA staff, who is, they do work on that program, and, and see if we could get a direct contact or someone could, could explain the program or assist the businesses in Temple City.
Right. So I'm, I'm similar to what William asked with regard to the rental program. You know, to be able to use those same guidelines would surely be helpful. With the rental program, I know you mentioned that the county also has a rental program already in place. Now, would we just be duplicating the exact same thing? We would just be able to, what possibly gives more than what the county has available?
Yeah, it, it would be up to us on, on the amount that we would want to create. We could do like a certain amount only for low-income households or extremely low income, or even moderate income households are eligible as well.
And, and that would be for a period of helping them for three months? It would be a set, there would be a cap on that time?
I, it would depend on, I think, how much interest we would have in the program. If, if we open it up to a lot more people, then maybe we could only do a couple of months of assistance. It just really depends on that.
Okay. And then just one more thing that I'd like the council members to think about is, the city of San Gabriel and Rosemead, who I see through my COG meetings, recently said that they would love to open a testing site in this side of the San Gabriel Valley. They, they thought that the Rosemead, if the K-March site on Rosemead Boulevard would be an ideal site if we were able to use that. And they suggested that possibly the three cities come together and, and share the cost. I know that San Gabriel already put $178,000 aside for a testing site. And I'm not sure what Rosemead has for CDBG funds, but they also were very interested if we wanted to partner. So I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities for not a whole lot of money that's available. But I just wanted to let the council know about that opportunity for a testing site here. Alhambra, I believe, opened either today or yesterday, and I heard they've had very positive, just the whole operation was very positive. They paid for the staffing, the county, from what I read, was paying for the individual tests. So I'm not sure of how the partnership works with the county, but it seems that they- So I'm not sure of how the partnership works with the county, but it seems that they will provide the testing if cities will provide the site and the staffing cost. And that's all, um, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protemu, any questions? Can't hear you, Vince.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself again. Uh, no, I have no questions.
No questions? Okay, um, just a couple of follow-up questions, um. So on the rental assistance, um, my question is, okay, so the county already has a related program and they're offering a thousand dollars a month for three months to renters. If we were to develop our own program, would would those same people be able to apply for for both our Temple City program and the L A program, or is it either or?
I did reach out to our our um liaison at L A C D A, L A County Development Authority. And um, they have not got back to me, but I don't believe that 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 program is eligible to um to Temple City residents. I believe it's only for residents in the unincorporated county areas.
Okay, so that was my next question. So this county program really isn't, is it was just being used as a template? It's not, it's not available to Temple City residents?
Correct.
And uh, to follow up on uh Councilmember Sternquist's comments, uh, it appears that we can uh, set whatever amount we deem necessary or uh, and of course, any time period that we would wanna uh, set that for. So for example, and just to use numbers, we could, we could say, well, we'll offer uh five hundred dollars a month or four months if we or something like that. There's no, there is no really parameters. It's basically up to the the city council and and of course, based on the money that's available.
I believe so. Um, I would need to check with with our um, with L A County or L A C D A, cause they're the ones that ultimately will be um, reviewing and approving the program. So I I believe that we we can do some additional months, as long as we're just under that, you know, the budget.
Good, of course, yeah. Well, we can, obviously, we can't give out more money than we have, so. Okay, uh, in the business program, um, the uh, let me get that here. Testing small businesses, um. Now, it has, Brian, maybe this is more for Brian Cook, cause I I know you've been working with Peter, as as uh, Peter's at the chamber, are they do you, are you aware of any program that uh, that they have uh, put out there for our local businesses? I know we all get the chambers updating, I think he updates that every couple of couple of uh, days, but I I don't have it in front of me, but I seem to believe that there were some links or things that that our our businesses here could at least look into both on a federal and state level.
That, Mayor Chavez, that is correct, and the chamber's trying to facilitate that, but um, there has been challenges with uh, some of those programs going forward. So um, in terms of what the chamber is doing, is trying to get that information out to their constituents and their board and their uh, the business members of our community. Um, how successful that's been in terms of Temple City businesses utilizing and being successful with those programs? We don't have any data on that, uh, but uh, anecdotally, Peter's told me that there's some of the businesses have struggled with that, but we don't have any, and we don't have any data that tells us so much how successful Temple City businesses have or have not been and how many have applied so far.
And and I agree with Councilmember Sternquist's uh, comments about, it it has turned into sort of a nightmare for for many of our small businesses as far as maneuvering themselves through this uh, you know, litany of paperwork and numbers and everything else. So it unfortunately there, but it's not there. It's one of those things that, um, you know, hopefully they'll they'll work out the kinks on that. Uh, last question, um, on the testing, um. Where do we have that? Okay, so, so my understanding is that there's the closest testing right now to us appears to be at the Almani Airport. Um, and then, of course, we just heard that Alhambra has opened theirs. Um. My question in that, the follow-up on on Councilmember Sternquist's comments about uh, Rosemead and San Gabriel, have they in fact reached out to us? And and Brian, maybe this is more for you, uh, I I know that this, it sounds like Cynthia has has spoken to colleagues at at meetings, but have they formally reached out to us? Are we gonna reach out to them? Is there anything on the table as far as that is concerned?
Uh, uh, my colleague with this from the city of San Gabriel has reached out to me. Uh, I told, I, you know, I had informed him that the council was considering all the available options and all the available programs tonight and um depending on the council's direction tonight, I would reach out to him. I have not reached out to uh my colleague at the city of Rosemead yet, but I have, I have spoken with um my colleague with the city of San Gabriel that reached out to me uh, in the last week or so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are all my uh, questions. So unless there are any other additional questions, I will now open up public comments. Uh, I will ask the city clerk if there are any public comment emails first.
Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and so uh, since there are no email, is there anybody that is on the line that would like to make any uh, public comments now at this time? Hearing that? I'm sorry.
I was just joking, you're talking in the background.
That, that's Kona trying to make a public comment, I think. All right, so we will now close our public comment. And then we will now move on to our last council questions and or comments. I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Mann.
Uh, thank you, Mary Chavez. Yeah, um, it's it's very interesting with the new funds and also the variety of uh, programs that were being considered. Um, I I think first regarding the um, testing center that Councilmember Sternquist brought up, um, I think I would be interested in maybe knowing more details about how that would actually be carried out. Um. Cause with a testing site at Almani Airport, uh, I guess the question I would naturally have is um, what prevents, what would prevent our residents from electing to use uh, the Almani Airport site through the county? Um, they have the whole system set up and it's right, right in our backyard. It's not that far. That that would be one thing, I guess, I I would wanna know what the advantages would be to opening one up besides it being physically located uh, in our city. Um, and also I would be curious about um, what Councilmember Sternquist mentioned about the county providing funds to um, provide, to pay for the testing. Um, I think that would make a big difference because uh, I think in the staff report, it's mentioned that the cost of the tests um could be pretty large, depending on how long you have it open for. Um, but I think um, if we don't have answers to those, I think the two areas we should focus on is the temporary rental assistance program. Um, and and I concur with um Councilmember Sternquist and then Mayor Chavez, I think um, are, a lot of our small businesses are struggling because of um the stay-at-home order. So I think that is also something worth exploring. Um, again, I think the details matter. We, it's not a large amount to divide up into so many things. Um, so I would be looking at what's sort of the most efficient use of the money. How, what what's the largest number of residents or businesses we can impact in the shortest amount of time? Cause for a lot of folks, um, time is of the essence. Um, if if it's gonna take us months before the money actually reaches the people that actually need it, then uh, in some ways, it defeats the purpose of and intent of um, trying to bring up programs that help them. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
Um, just that and trying to weigh the benefits of, you know, a hundred and twenty-three thousand uh, dollars being used, I think having our small businesses receive, you know, whether it was, you divvied it up so that more people benefited. But I I think that might be the best way to go with that amount of money, because I think even just I I'm gonna use the um ice cream shop as an example. They had a grand opening. They were open for about, I think, less than two months before this all happened. And I mean, they're, they're failing before they even got a chance to start and they're, you know, paying their rent and I think there's gonna be more opportunities for home, um, renters. I mean, they've, they've even thrown out rent freezes and, you know, different types of programs that seem to really wanna keep residents in their homes so that we're not contributing to the homeless um, population. So I think there's gonna be more funding down the pipeline for um, rental assistance than there is going to be for individual cities with small businesses. I know that the city of Pomona recently, I believe they used four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of course, they get more C D B G funds. But um, they said their small businesses were just dying and this really will keep them afloat for at least another three months. So those are my thoughts. I mean, I wish we could help everybody, but that's not the case. I think that the, one of the, the problems with the Almani testing, from what I heard, is that since Almani was funding that, and I think through C D B G funds, there was um, I'm not sure for, I'm not absolutely sure, but I think there was some partnership with the city of South Almani. So basically, they were um, just using it for the referrals through a partnership with a health, um, kind of like a healthcare partners, but it's not called that. And so I think the three of them partnered together. And they were just getting mi- minimal amounts from, I guess, just the testing from the county. So the residents in this section of the San Gabriel Valley really weren't able to go there without really, you know, going, jumping through a lot of hoops. And I I I, I think that's my best answer, William, from what I've heard about the Almani testing site. Now, as more people get tested, you know, then maybe our residents would have the opportunity to do so. But I think that's a more complicated um, and time-consuming process to go through the, the testing route. So, I mean, I'm willing to help.
Let me interrupt you real quick. So are you saying that Temple City residents are not being allowed to be tested at the Almani Airport? Is that what you heard?
I believe they were, that they weren't given priority. So the cities of South Almani and Almani residents were given priority and you still, you need to have an order to get there to have testing. As of this last week, you you actually had to have an order to get through testing and I heard through one of our residents who went to try to get a test, they were sent to Elysian Park. And that was the closest testing site that a a resident from our city was able to go to.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protemu, any last comments, questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the testing, I believe that's sort of a complicated process. Uh, nor do we own the K March site. Um, I think um, the mobile testing is um, a very fluid, uh, a lot of development every day. The county's putting out new programs. Um, so I think that with the limited money that we're getting, with hundred twenty-three K, I'd rather focus, my preference is focus something that is a little bit more for sure. So personally, I'm interested in helping small business, um, small businesses, but I'm concerned of the requirement that I'm reading here, that potentially it has to be limited to businesses that employ low-income uh, workers. And I think that might open up a whole can of worms here and I think people are hurting. Uh, I agree with my fellow council members saying that whatever program can be implemented in the most expeditious manner would be the best. So um, if it's up to me and if um, low-income worker requirement is not there, I would rather spend the money to help the small businesses. But if that requirement is there and it complicate things, I think we should go for um, the rental assistance. As far as the other programs, asbestos testing, rehabilitation loans, uh, youth scholarship, we already have existing uh, C D B G funded programs. I would rather pass those up and uh, focus on either the um, rent, um, subsidy or the small business loans.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Sternquist uh, made a statement that brought something to my mind, and that is that uh, she stated that uh, in talking with some of the businesses and maybe some of the others have as well, that a lot of those new owners, especially new owners, are also having difficulty paying their rent. I guess I should have asked this early on, but this temporary rental assistance program, is that only for residents or is that also for businesses as well? I don't know if Adam or Brian want-
For residents.
It's only for residents?
Correct.
Okay, cause I was thinking, boy, we could uh, do the best, the best of both worlds if we could do rental assistance to both residents and businesses. I mean, obviously, if you've got businesses who are suffering, one of those things suffering from is the inability to pay their rent. And if they had some assistance, I mean, they could do that. Obviously, there are other, other reasons, uh, to pay their employees and things like that, but uh, you know, uh, you know, every little bit helps, but apparently there is a limit to, to that rental assistance program as well. Um, okay, well, I I think from what I'm hearing so far and I, I is that and and we all have a little bit of different, I guess, uh, views on, on it, but, but I think we all can agree that you know, the funds we have are very limited. Um, you know, a hundred and twenty-three thousand may sound like a lot, but once you get going, it's gonna go pretty quick. Uh, no matter, any of these programs that we have decided upon, I would like to see us use, you know, in this kind of situation, when when we can get, you know, more bang for our bucks, you you know, what, how can we help the most people in 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 the, in the, in the toughest situations? I think, I think that should be probably the focus with this money. Um, I I don't have, you know, I, the the three programs that I would consider, of course, would be the rental assistance program, the business assistance program, and also the, the drive-up mobile testing. The only thing, uh, I have a problem with the mobile testing is that, um, you know, I know that it's very expensive and 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 of course, once you set that up, you know, and let's say we do get an influx that's maybe even higher than we anticipated, the cost, I'm sure will go up from there as well. Um, you know, and and our, our limited funds will be gone, could be gone in a very, very short time. I know these, I know that other cities are willing to, to invest in that and to help out. But but, you know, when looking at it, I'd like to skip more information, maybe staff can follow up on this as far as what Almani Airport is actually offering and are they excluding Temple City residents? Because obviously, if they are, then there's more of a need here in Temple City uh, for such a situation. But I I haven't heard that, and I would hope that that's not the case. But uh, certainly having a, a location in Temple City would certainly be a, a plus for San Gabriel and Rosemead as uh, as far as not having to go to Almani, but uh, I I don't know, I I'm not sure that that is the best, the best way to to spend our money at this time. Uh, Mayor?
Add some to what you just said?
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm actually on the uh, camp, county's uh, 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 COVID nineteen test website right now. I'm looking at it. For the, they're creating the COVID testing, and this is on the Almonte location. It's open to all L A County residents.
Yeah, yeah, I I, I would think it would be, but, but you know, you- Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would think it would be, but, but, you know, you never know. I mean, we, you, you know, they say, they say one thing, you read one thing and maybe they're doing another. Who knows, uh?
Yeah, yeah, who knows, yeah.
But, uh, but I think all good comments, all good considerations, I think. Uh, given the, if, if I had to make a choice, and I think, of course, that's what staff wants to know tonight, is which, which of these programs, if any, we want to at least focus on. First, we have to vet these out still and, and it's going to require staff to go back and, and provide more information to us, how we can use it, what best things to use. I would be, I would be inclined to say, um, let's take a look at the, both the temporary rental assistance program as well as the business program as well and see what we can do with the money we have, how we can do it, and sort of vet a little bit more of the restrictions that perhaps, uh, are there that may prohibit us from doing things that we want to do. I, that's a better way of helping those, you know, specifically in getting the money into the hands, into the, money into the hands of those who need it. So, um-
Mayor-
Yes, go ahead, Cindy.
Mayor, I, I have a question. Are we, are, could we take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the other pot of CDBG funds and do both rental assistance and small business and put some of the rehab work on hold for a year? Since this seems to be more of a need than actually, you know, rehabbing some homes right now?
Yeah, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but I believe that that's something that would be brought back to us as far as the reallocation of the other funds that we have for CDBG. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what our, our plan was going to be, to come back sometime next month. Um, we would know, we've had a better, we would have a better idea of what our balances would be and any potential money that would carry over to the next, uh, fiscal year.
And, and to answer Councilmember Sternquist's question, I believe, can we reallocate those monies to other programs such as what we're discussing tonight?
That is an option.
Okay, so, so, you know, given that, I think, uh, I guess for tonight, I think what staff wants to know is which programs are we really interested in, in going forward with, knowing that we have at least a hundred and twenty-three thousand right now, but also knowing that there could, within our discretion to take some of the monies that we already have or will have and put those into the same or different programs as well? Is that, Cindy, does that kind of, uh, sum that up for you?
Yes, because, you know, I'm thinking if, if we could do that, which seems to make the most sense, I would actually put the testing on hold and move these two to the forefront. So whether we did one this month and then chose the, you know, rental this month and small business the next month or vice versa, I mean, it seemed to really kind of ease my comfort in being able to reach out to, you know, to groups of people who are really hurting in our city. And, uh, uh, so I, I feel more comfortable doing that.
Well, I, and I think that's, that's, that's probably something that's doable is from what, based on what I've heard. And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but also, um, tonight, we're not deciding, I believe, as to the amounts or anything like that. That still has to come back to us. I believe we're, we're more of at a higher level right now. And that is which programs do we want to focus on? Uh, and then, of course, determine what, what monies and how we're going to do that. Keeping in mind that next month, we may have some additional monies that we can spread out into either one or both of these programs or whichever ones we decide. Is that, Mr. Cook, is that, is that, uh, correct? Or, or is that something that, uh, that we could do?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Chavez, um, that, and that gives us direction. It'd be helpful if you could give us direction too that if it's the direction of council to kind of equally fund both or to try to find a way, how, how, like, what proportions would you want to fund those as well? Just give us a sense of that, even though we won't have all the dollar amount left yet. But, um, if, 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 if it's, if it's the council's desire to kind of fund both programs, um, that would be helpful for us. And it would make it more expeditious for us to come back with, uh, something sooner rather than later.
Okay, well, uh, you know, and I, again, I don't want to speak for anybody else. So any, any of my colleagues who, who want to comment, it, it appears to me that based on the remarks that we've just heard, that the, the rental program and the business program are probably the two that we would focus on. I think each of us may have a preference over one or the other. But if we can do both, maybe look at both and maybe see what we can do any of those as far as the amounts and everything that are going on, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, correct.
Is that something that, um, we can ask, um, um, city manager, Mr. City Manager and staff to come back at the next meeting and give us, focusing on the two programs like you described? And perhaps we can have a better, uh, uh, understanding how much money we have left in the other programs and-
I, I think that would, yeah. I agree, I think that would allow us to make more of an intelligent and informed decision. But I think, I think tonight, if we can say, uh, get the two programs we want to focus on and at this time, uh, you know, we'll treat them equally. But at the same time, we know what pressures are going to be. So we're not going to necessarily tie ourselves down, but at least give, uh, staff something to work with to bring that back to us so that we can discuss it further. Does, does that sound, um, doable, Brian?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And that sounds like a motion.
Okay, well, no, I, I don't know if that was a motion or not, but, uh, uh-
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we, we do have a motion, I, hopefully this is-
That motion, the mayor.
All right, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So why don't we, uh, go with a roll call, uh, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that, uh, good discussion. And, uh, uh, you know, I know these are not easy decisions by any means. So, um, now we will move on to, uh, item B, the approval of resolution number twenty-dash-five-four-seven-two to approve the Road Repair and Accountability Act SB One project list for fiscal year 2020, 2021. I think, uh, manager, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, members of the council. Very briefly, you receive this on a yearly basis, the SB One funds that the state approved for roadway projects. Uh, just as a reminder, we are not bound by what the resolution says in terms of the exact project, but that we have projects identified. Uh, last Thursday, the California Transportation Commission had a hearing to extend the deadline, which was actually May first to, uh, mid-June. And along with the expenditure reports, your last fending of your SB One fund was actually for the Slurisil project, that was up and down Rosemeat Boulevard to preserve the pavement and the work that had been done prior, uh, the extensive work that had been done prior on Rosemeat Boulevard. Uh, so this is, uh, kind of a routine matter in this way. And, uh, here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. So why don't we start this time with Mayor Protam Yu? Do you have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions. I think, um, we do this routinely, so, um, it's something that we need to do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Mann, any question?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, okay. We will now open up public comment. I'll ask the City Clerk first if she's received any, uh, public comment emails on this matter.
There are no, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and, uh, if you'll go ahead and unmute, uh, the public, are there any public comments on those who are listening? Hearing none, I will close public comments. And now we will go to final council comments or questions. And again, I'll start with Mayor Protam Yu.
All right, no further comments, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, and-
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann, any further comments?
Uh, no, I, I think this is a good list and we should continue doing, uh, providing those services where we can. SB One helps us do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
Um, just do it.
Okay, well, I, I don't have any questions or comments myself. Uh, uh, so I will now entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-dash-five-four-seven-two to approve the resurfacing of various streets in Temple City's designated project for the RMR funds for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 pursuant to SB One. Uh, and to direct the city manager to include the corresponding capital improvement projects for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 in the city budget, um, which includes the RMRA funds and the required general fund maintenance of effort match. And to authorize the city manager to submit the required documents and information to the California Transportation Commission for the city to receive these funds.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Sternquist has a second. And any objection? If not, uh, Adam, Clerk, can we, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to item C, the overview of temporary emergency action related to continuity of city services of personnel and request for direction. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, members of the council. You've seen this several times now in terms of how we are operating as a virtual city hall in many ways. Um, our field crews are out in the field, are, uh, where we can, um, and where it is safe to do so. We are doing that in providing services in the field and when staff has to come to city hall. Uh, we are asking for this, uh, to be continued to May thirtieth. Uh, the current safer home order, it looks to be modified. Uh, but guidelines related to office work and other, how an office can be configured, uh, is still to be determined. Um, so we ask, um, for you to consider, uh, extend, extending this to May thirtieth. Um, and that's it for me unless Ms. Pagodas has anything else to add as your administrative, as the administrative services director.
Okay, anything further?
Hi, um, this is Susan Parag.
Hi, Susan, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to clarify the date. Um, the date on our staff report is May thirty-first till the end of the month. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, that was, that was, that was my question, is it May thirty, May thirty-first? Because there's thirty-one days.
That was the city manager's mistake.
Okay, got that cleared up, thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with, uh, Councilmember Mann, any question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Chavez, just, uh, one question for Mr. Cook. Um, like, I, you mentioned before, the phasing is still being worked on in terms of staff and city hall. Um, now, do you anticipate that, um, you, you might not know it now, but I guess my question would be, do you anticipate this needing to be further extended, um, further down the line? Or do you expect to bring something back to council before the end of the month kind of outlining what those, um, phasing plans are? If, if this would then sort of require further extensions into June?
The answer to your question to both is yes. Uh, we will talk to you about what we are internally looking at in terms of how we bring some folks back to city hall potentially. But I would, I, I can anticipate and would anticipate a further extension of, of this request.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Sternquist, any questions at this time?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank, thank you. Mayor Protam Yu, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Okay, we will open up public comment. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment emails?
No, sir, I do not have any emails, public comment.
Okay, um, all right, so if we'll unmute the microphones, are there any public comments, uh, for those out in the public? Hearing none, I will close public comments. And now we will, I will entertain any final comments by council members. Councilmember Mann?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think, I think extending it is the right thing to do. We've talked about this in previous meetings. Uh, but at the same time, sort of similar to my initial question, I think, um, we as a council deserve to know, uh, what the plans are, even though we know everything's a rapidly changing and developing situation. If the stay-at-home order does expire at the end of the month, um, I know different agencies are working through different phasing plans of bringing staff back. Um, that might be something that our city would undergo. Um, but I think in order to, for us to make an informed decision on possible future extensions, we should be, um, we should be aware of what that phasing would look like.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Uh, Councilmember, final comments?
Um, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Yu that, um, I think it's important for council to be aware of, you know, how that recovery, what it's going to look like. Um, and speaking with the mayor of Pomona recently, um, we had a, a COG, COG Zoom meeting. And, um, one of the conversations under comments was that each city was trying to figure out how they were going to return to work. And the mayor of, um, Pomona shared that he, uh, established an ad hoc committee of two council members that worked along with staff and the city manager. And I forget exactly what he called it, but they actually worked together on, um, developing what the plan would look like, what a return-to-work plan would look like. Um, I don't know if we need that, but I, I do think it's really important for us to be part of, at least the understanding of what this is going to look like sooner than later. Because I didn't think we would be altering to stay at home this early. So I think we might be surprised that things are going to be opening up much quicker than we even thought of. So I, I just share that however we can be part of knowing sooner than later what staff is thinking along with the city manager would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protam Yu, any final comment?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it, I have two, two, my thinking is along two, two different lines. One is that I think the approval of the, uh, extra funding tonight, um, would, would give the Mr. City Manager, uh, the tool that he needs to get us to the, uh, end of the month. Um, the safer home order is not clear whether or not it would continue. But I think the speculation, reasonable speculation is that it would continue in some modified shape. That, um, so in other words, for, in order for the Mr. City Manager to do his work, um, there might, and then comply with the modified order, perhaps he still need to use some of the administrative leave, uh, budget in order for him to do his work or, or provide his staff. So I, so to that end, I am supportive of, uh, approving additional monies. Um, but yet at the same time, I also want to put it out there that, um, the reason why our city is able to weather, um, the COVID-nineteen economic crisis, uh, and allow us to give it the, uh, ability to maintain our staff and, and, and continue to pay our staff because we do have a fairly, um, conservative fiscal policies. And I think, I, I think that's a good example of what we've done. Allows us to, uh, continue our hearing the city functions, uh, in difficult times. And, and as we go into budget seasons very shortly, I think we should be, uh, keep this in mind as we move forward.
Okay, thank you for those comments and, and I agree, um, uh, you know, first of all, um, I think, uh, continuing this to the end of the month is, is good governance at this point. Um, uh, Council- Um, uh, Councilmember Sternquist, was that term that the mayor of Pomona used, was it a task force?
Uh, you know, maybe. I, I can't recall, but
That seems to be a
Okay, everybody seems to be, um, like, oh, maybe that's something that we should do just to kind of, you know, everybody is on the same page and, and things are already moving towards a back to work, um, goal, if you will. Um, I don't know if we need that, but it, it would be nice if we could have that, Brian, just what is being discussed and maybe your weekly report to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So I tend to agree. I think, uh, I, I would, Mayor Pro Tem You, you know, I, you know, this safe at home. I mean, you know, obviously we all read the same headlines, we all read the same, uh, articles and they're all over the place still, um. You know, and, and of course, California being one of the hardest hit areas in the country, um. You know, I believe that we have shown a little bit of caution in that regard. And even though there has been some talk of re, relacking some of the restrictions, I don't see either LA, specifically LA County, uh, opening the doors and everything uh, automatically. It's going to be a slow process. It's going to be a process I think that we need to, to really consider, um, and, and, and take it, uh, you know, a step at a time. So obviously that's going to make us, or, or have us make some difficult decisions as we come, but I think, uh, I think Brian has heard, uh, uh, City Manager Cook has heard uh, what, what we would like to see and, and I know that, uh, uh, he is moving in that direction as well. And so, uh, I think we all want to obviously hope for the best, but of course, uh, same time, I think plan for the worst as well. So uh, given that, um, um, we will then, uh, we'll then entertain a motion at this time. Anybody?
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I'll, I'll move to, to direct the city manager to continue the implementation of paid administrative leave for employees until May thirty first.
I didn't hear a second. Do we have one?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. If there's any, unless there's any objection, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem You?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. I think we're done with Vince. Was that a yes from you?
Yes.
You're, you're on. Oh, thank you. All right. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Item D, Appointment to Council. Um, as we all recalled our last meeting on April, or at our meeting on April twenty eighth, um, we decided that we would unanimously, uh, or we unanimously decided that we would uh, fill the council member seat that is, uh, is open at by appointment. And so tonight, uh, we're discuss, um, how to move forward in that regard. Uh, Brian, do we have any staff report or anything that you would like to say before we, uh, open that up?
No, sir. Guys, staff report, staff mandatory.
Okay, so, um, I believe the direction for tonight was to, uh, think about, uh, some nominations or, or thing, or people who, who we all thought would probably be, um, you know, in a position at least to, uh, uh, to look and to fill this open seat. And, uh, you know, it's, as, uh, we have gone through this in the past, uh, Mayor Pro Tem You and I, of course, personally went through it a number of years ago and, uh, you know, at that time, of course, it was a different topic as far as what we could do and how we would do it. Of course, we're going to have to modify that somehow, but I think the the parameters are, are still basically the same. So what I would like to do, I would like to first start uh, with just a discussion and I'll just go ahead and call on our members to, um, you know, basically tell us what they've, they've thought about or what they want to do. I think the focus tonight should be on, on at least selecting or, or, or developing a list, uh, of those who we believe, uh, um, should at least, uh, uh, be, uh, and if we decide to do so, uh, interviewed and then of course, uh, of course, we'll discuss that tonight is how we're going to do that and the process that we're going to use. So, uh, Councilmember Mann, if you don't mind, I'll start with you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yeah, and, well, in thinking about this process, um, the first thing that I thought about was, um, what were we missing when Councilmember Fish resigned? Um, and I was thinking of people who had done a lot of work in our community, whether it's volunteering, being involved in organizations, um, knowing our city functions and our city goals very well. And I say this because I want to bring up someone who, um, I'm actually not going to nominate them because they're not inclined to take on that responsibility, but I think it's worth mentioning their name because I think they're worthy of the spot. And, uh, that person is Lucy Liu. Um, she's heavily involved in everything. Um, her list of achievements goes on and on, but, um, uh, in, in discussing with her, um, the timing is not right, um, but I just felt it's, it's worth to give her a shout out. Um, the, the other person I want to also give a shout out to is, um, in, in thinking of people who could fill the seat immediately, we, um, in our last meetings, someone had alluded to a candidate who can kind of hit the ground running. Um, and so the first persons I thought of was obviously people who have served before in the past and uh, name that came to mind was Carl Bloom, former mayor and council member, uh, but my understanding is he, um, the timing is also not right, but I, I want to give him a shout out as well. Um, because I think highly of him and respect him. Now on to the people that I, I do want to nominate. Um, we often talk about our commissions being, um, sort of the, uh, what was the term we always use? Uh, elusiveness.
Around our spring training.
Training grounds, yes, yes. We, we've talked about that and you know, in, in the past, when we had the Citizens Academy, we referred to that as a, as good entry point for it. Um, and, and the commissioner, um, that I had in mind that I thought, uh, would be a great candidate for council to consider is, uh, Mr. Serge Hadad, who uh, serves on our planning commission currently. Um, and he, if I recall, he also served on our Public Safety and Transportation Commission. Um, he's a very knowledgeable guy. He's, um, his whole family is actually very dedicated and devoted to the city. He knows our city functions, uh, very well. Um, I think it'll be worthwhile for council to consider him, um, as a potential person to fill the seat. Um, the second person that I would like to nominate, um, again, goes back to, um, somewhat we hit the ground running. Um, and that would be former mayor and council member Fernando Viscara. Um, being someone that has served multiple terms, uh, clearly has a understanding and passion for our city. Um, and his prior work in high level administrative services, um. And I think he would also be a excellent candidate for council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist? Your thoughts? Are you still with us, Cindy? It appears that we may have lost her again. Uh, maybe someone from staff can give her a call. Okay, why don't we go then to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem You?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Um, and I agree with, uh, everything that, um, uh, Councilmember Mann said. Uh, but however, and perhaps I'll take on a slightly different take. I think that, um, the financial difficulties ahead of us is probably, um, something we have never experienced in the, um. Even at times that were, were, uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I are on the council. I, I think the financial hard time ahead of us is probably nothing to be, to be underestimated. Uh, underestimated. Um, the county just now, um, estimated, uh, they are going to go into a, a deficit of one billion dollar this fiscal year. And then they talk about another billion dollar deficit next year.
Hello?
And that is for, for a county with about thirty uh, billion dollar. And so that is a, a thirty dol, thirty billion dollar budget. That, that's a lot of money uh, that one will be looking for.
Hey Vince, Vince, hold on one second. I just want to, I think, uh, Cindy, are you back on the line?
I am. I'm sorry, my cat stepped on the phone.
Yeah, that happens, okay. At least you didn't.
Sorry.
Okay, so we went ahead and
Thank you.
We, we heard from William, now we're hearing from Vince, and then we'll go to you next, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Vince.
So, so I think we need to be prepared, um, to, for, to bring on a council member that can help the council to um, really understand and, and, and help that our city manager make the right decisions ahead of time. Um, and, and, and I agree, we need to bring somebody that can, uh, hit the ground and running. Um, I personally, uh, do look back at, uh, former council members and, um, and I think that a former mayor, um, uh, Bloom and former mayor Viscara will be good candidates, but I don't think, uh, 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 former mayor, uh, Bloom is, uh, available. The timing like, um, Mr., uh, Councilmember Mann was saying is not right for him. So I am prepared to nominate, uh, former mayor, uh, Viscara to, to be our next, um, uh, uh, council member. Um, he was a, uh, not only served many years on, on a multiple terms of the city council. He was a very high level, um, administrator with, uh, Los Angeles County. And also, uh, uh, with a major hospital, uh, in Riverside and, um, so I, I trust that he can help us with this financial background, um, to help us, uh, make a lot of good, uh, the hard financial decisions ahead of time.
Okay, so, yeah, so at this time, just so I'm, I'm clear, you just have the one nomination, is that correct?
Just one of them.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I reached out to three people. Um, two, they both turned me down. Um, one of them was our past Parks and Rec Commission, um, Director Kathy Burrows. I thought she's lived in our city forever. She's grown up in this town. She served as our interim city manager at a time and, um, she too felt that she was wanted to enjoy her retirement as it was really very recent. I also reached out to one of our public safety commissioners, Noel. Um, Paul Mary, I believe is how you say the last name, and she also was at a place in her life where she felt she did not have enough time to, um, contribute to council. And, um, I would also like to say that I reached out to Councilmember Viscara, our past mayor and council member Viscara, and would like to nominate him also. I had the opportunity to serve with him for four years and learned a lot from him. Definitely feel that he could hit the, the ground running, so I'm happy to hear that others felt the same way. And so I am just nominating one person this evening, and that is Fernando Viscara.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, so we've got, uh, we've got three, uh, three votes for, uh, Councilmember Viscar, although from the way, we do have a, a couple others on the board as well, so, um. I also, uh, reached out, uh, to a couple of people and a couple of people reached out to me. Um, um, uh, on my list, although I did not speak to him because I'm sure others were going to do so, and I heard through the grapevine that others have spoken to him, I think, uh, I think Serge Hadad would be a well, a, a worthy candidate, uh, for us to consider, uh, uh, based on his performances on the planning commission and in speaking with other planning commissioners, uh, I believe that, uh, certainly he has the wherewithal to, uh, to assume such a position. Um, also spoke to, uh, Fernando Viscara, and I know that he's interested in this position as well. I did speak with, uh, Carl Bloom, and I know that he's not interested in this position. Um, you know, and, uh, so that, that, that's understandable. Uh, let me throw another name out there to you guys, uh, uh, um, some, I'm sure, um, William may not know him or may have heard of him, but, uh, I heard also from Peter Zovak. Um, Vince, you may have, uh, remember Peter, I think.
Yes, I remember.
Mission with him at one time, or? Um, I don't know if you were on the same planning commission. He was, he was also a former ma, mayor and, and, uh, and council member as well. Um, but, uh, uh, he has also applied, as you remember, uh, for the planning commission, I think, well, maybe a few years ago as well, so. Okay, so, so, uh, you know, that, that, that again is my shortlist, so, um, since, since I, I was committed to at least, uh, bringing two people to, to try to, you know, make this, uh, as, uh, as transparent and as fair as possible. Uh, my, my two choices at this time, or at least the two candidates that I would propose that we at least interview, if that's the choice tonight, would be Serge Hadad and Peter Zovak. So those are my two choices. So I've kind of been keeping track here. Um, and I'm sure, uh, staff has been doing the same thing. So, uh, what I've heard so far is we've got, um, two, two nominations for Serge. We've got three nominations for, uh, Viscara, and we've got one nomination for, uh, Zovak. And so that is, that gives us three candidates, uh, to, uh, perhaps, uh, talk about or talk about at least how we want to move forward. So, uh, unless anybody, well, you know what, let's, let's stick with the script, so. So that's basically everybody's having to comment at that point, so I believe we need to at least open this up now to, uh, public comment. Um, do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so not here? Not email, no emails? And if we're, do we, are we opening up the mics for the, um, public?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, do we have any public comments on Item D? Hearing none, I will close public comment. So, um, so now we move on to, of course, the final questions and or comments by the council members. Um, as I previously, uh, stated, I've kind of summed up where we are so far. And, um, does anybody have any further comment on either those three individuals or any others that they would like to comment on? Hearing none? So I guess the next decision to be made tonight? Uh, go ahead, Cindy, I'm sorry.
I, I thought I heard someone talking in the background. I didn't know if they were trying to chime in or not.
Uh, no, I didn't hear anybody's.
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing that I think we need to discuss tonight, uh, we, we now have three individuals on the shortlist. Um, how do we proceed further? And of course, uh, Mr. Murphy, if you have any, any comments or concerns, please feel free to chime in as well as City Manager Cook, but I'd like to next discuss, uh, our next step in this process. My, based on past experience, um, I suppose that we, uh, set up uh, an interview of each of these three individuals so that they all get a chance to ask their questions. Uh, they can ask us any questions that they may want to do. I, I think that, uh, in vetting out the three individuals, that would probably be the next step. And then I think that based on interviews, we should be in a better position, I think, to make a final decision. Um, on the vote of the council at that time. So uh, I'm open to any other suggestions or concerns or comments. So I will just put that on the floor. Is anybody else would like to make a, a comment or ask a question at this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Hold on, we'll go first, go ahead.
Go ahead, Vince, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, personally, I don't need further interviews because these are, um, member, um, all, all three, uh, gentlemen, we, we do know. Um, so they're We we do know. Um, so they are not in other words, I think I said it last time, I think the nomination process is really not a um open uh popularity contest, if you will, at least in my opinion. So I personally don't need to to for any further interviews or um I am ready to um to put this to a vote tonight personally. Uh, that's my thought. I don't think you benefit me to uh to to interview these individuals.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Man? Any comment?
Yeah, it's kind of an unusual situation just because uh I don't have the benefit of past experience from the three of you. I I I do know what what's what the process was in the past. Um. I mean, I I I see Mayor Protem Yu's point um in terms of, you know, the nomination process and and who we think are qualified. Um. I I think the, personally, I think the nominees at least deserve a chance to make a case. Um, um, maybe it might not change some people's minds, but uh I think part of that trans, open and transparent process is to uh give everyone, give everyone a a shot at least, so.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Councilperson Quest?
Sure, I'm ready to make a motion tonight if I can.
Okay, so so you.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Fernando Viscara.
Hold on, we're not in the motion, we're not into the motion process yet. We're just uh discussing how to move forward. That he is, he would uh forego any interviews and be ready to elect um the candidate tonight. Uh, um, Councilmember Man has indicated that he would prefer at least move on uh with uh any of the three people that we've identified so far. And so now that's what we're asking. So what are what are your concerns or comments on those, on that issue?
Um, I would prefer due to time. I think this has been an open and transparent process. I think Mr. Um, Councilmember Man and myself shared that people that, you know, we we reached out to. I mean, I'm I'm ready to move forward. I think there's just so much that we're faced with right now. I would just like to have this peace taken care of at this time. It 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 is worrisome. It's something that I I think about a lot and I've put a lot of thought into it. So if I'm able to make a motion tonight, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Fernando this evening and forego any further interviews.
All right, hold on. Certainly, you can make a motion, but we're not to that point yet. I haven't called for a motion, so uh, I appreciate your comment. So you're, I I believe, I believe that you would be in favor of of no interviews and and moving forward uh with a selection this evening. Is that correct?
Yes. It it is. I I'm I'm, do we have to be at a certain point to make a motion? I just want some clarification.
But yeah, we're 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 having concluded council comment and uh and uh we we we.
Okay, maybe that's when I I was gone for a bit.
Yeah, we're we're right. We're just going to final comment, so so so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So we've heard from three council members, so that leaves me. Um, and uh, I I'm leaning towards towards the interviews. Um, and the reason for that is because this is not um as we have in the past appointment to fill uh a a spot for for a few months or a year or even two years. This is basically an entire uh short of maybe a couple of months. Uh, it's obviously and and I we're all aware that this is certainly an important decision to make. And uh, you know, whether whether interviews will change or not, of course, that remains to be seen. As far as the timing is concerned, um, today is the fifth of May. We have, we have until the twentieth of May to fill this this position. I think that even in interviewing, arranging for the interview of three individuals, like, I don't think time is of the essence at this point. If this were the eighteenth or nineteenth of May, I'm sure I would feel otherwise. But uh, I'm not sure that there is a rush necessarily judgment in this position, is that this situation. Uh, I think there are, there are three worthy candidates. They all have, they all bring something to the table. But given the fact that there are some members on the council that may not be as familiar with some of them as others would be, I I think that that is a reason enough. Uh, we're all going to be making the decision together to at least afford uh an interview of those three. And uh, that that. So now that we've all commented.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, if um, because our next meeting is really gonna be the nineteenth. So unless we were to call a special meeting, uh, we'll be awfully close to the twenty. We're just uh, and any, and 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 some unlikely could, unlikely event that might creep creep up on us. And we end up with a um, with no decision on the eighteenth, on the nineteenth, then we will be uh running very tight uh up against the um uh statutory guideline on on into a uh an election situation. So that's, that's why not, why I want to have an early vote.
I appreciate that concern. Let me ask uh, Mr. Uh.
That was my concern also with time.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate it. And then that that's certainly a concern. Let me, let me ask our city attorney. Uh, if we were to schedule uh an interviews um at some particular time, uh, would we be able to also make the decision at that particular time as well?
Yes, uh, the charter does not require that the decision be made at a regular meeting. So if it is the will of the council to schedule a special meeting, it would be agendized as um, the interviews of and potential selection of uh the new council member and the resolution approving the council member would be, or I I'm sorry, seating the council member would be prepared by the city clerk's office so it could be adopted that night if that were the will of the council.
Okay, okay, so, so, so we we don't necessarily have to wait until council meeting, obviously, to do that.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Are there any other further comments or questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, uh, this is the time now for a council motion on what, how we want to proceed uh with this particular matter. So I will, I will go ahead and entertain a motion and then we will vote. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Fernando Viscara for an appointment to city council.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second then.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So we will now take a roll call vote unless there's any objection. Um, and so I will then uh ask the city clerk to please take a roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Man?
Well, considering the discussion on the interview process, um, I don't think this is the right time to um, vote for that, so I would say no.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Chavez?
And for the same reason uh that Councilmember Man stated, uh, because uh regarding the interview process, I would have to say no to that at this time. So we have a two to two vote, so that motion fails. Um, and so um, do we have second motion?
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I I'd like to make a motion that we um code interviews for the three nominated candidates within the next week.
Okay.
If that's logistically, I guess I should ask the question, is that logistically possible from staff's perspective? To do that prior to the um, the second meeting, which is I guess, is it possible to do do a special meeting next week?
Is it, sorry, in instead of within the next week, if we could say by Friday the fifteenth, so on or before Friday the fifteenth, that would give uh staff time to work with all four of your calendars as well as the calendars of the three potential uh candidates.
And if if I were to understand, the meeting would be dedicated solely to this item?
That is up to the city council. We will not add anything to your agenda. We will, we will make this just for this item uh unless you direct us to add something else, sir.
Okay, then then I'll I'll amend my motion um, and according to what Mr. Murphy said, um, to have a meeting on or before May fifteenth to determine this met, to interview the three nominees.
Can I suggest I am not available on Thursday or Friday of next week? So it would have to be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday if you could amend that motion?
Well, that's okay. Well. amended, it was honored before the fifteenth, so if you're not available, obviously, on those days, then obviously we won't be able to do them on those days, but it's honor, I think that the motion was.
Yeah, honor.
I have, I have um, Foothill Transit, I'm the chair of that meeting. I have um Cog, I'm the chair of that meeting. Um, there's um Senate, not Senate, it's GAG. There's just so many meetings next week. They're all on Thursday and Friday.
Okay, well, we'll certainly take it. We haven't made any final decision, but certainly that can be taken.
What is the date of Wednesday? Is that the thirteen?
Yeah.
Thirteen? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, so we have a motion. Uh, do we have a Okay, I would, I would second that motion. And so uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Man?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
No.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, I will vote yes, just to move this forward. Um, um, as long as we're not not meeting on the day that that Councilmember Sternquist not doing.
Yeah, no. We we would not do that too.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Chavez?
Councilmember Sternquist, we will not do that. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a, a, the motion passed three to one. Uh, and so uh, that will be the direction to uh staff. So uh, Brian, if you could, and and if you, your staff could to get that set up, keep in mind the calendars as we always do. Uh, I, you know, just want to add that I understand the concern uh and and that you need as quick as possible. And even everything that we've said tonight and everything that we're going to be moving forward may not change anything, but uh, you know, I too, and I think the four of us hopefully can come to an agreement to agree at least time that we're gonna do it. And I I I'm, I'm confident that we'll be able to do it quickly uh and judiciously and uh and and come to a, come to a consensus as to what we're gonna do. And and obviously, I think we all know the importance of this. I mean, this is a, this is a person that's going to be serving with us for the next four years. And so obviously, it's a very important position to 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 take, so.
Yeah, and and I will say that, you know, after thinking about this, and and that's one of the reasons, Tom, that I suggested and nominated Fernando Viscara is because this is not a eighteen month term that I've, like I filled. Um, it is almost a full term, four years. And um, I know we've, you know, brought commissioners names forward and Carl Bloom. By by all means, I knew Carl would not be in a place, um, or I would have probably brought Carl Bloom's name forward also. But just in my recent conversations, they're just finally enjoying some time, you know, together after forty years of of really caring for their daughter, they're they're able to continue to do that, but have some time for them, um, for Jeanette and and Carl. But it is four years, and one of the reasons that I did nominate Fernando Viscara is that he was elected twice by this community um to city council. So I actually lost to Fernando Viscara um when we ran together for city council for the very first time. So I was looking for someone that not only had um council support. For us, yes, definitely. I reached out to commissioners and, but to someone who had the support of this community and was elected by this community to two terms, and he was termed out. He wasn't kicked out of office, as we've had some council members that have served in our community. He was elected by the people of this community uh two times. And or three times, I'm sorry. So I think that was one of my, you know, heartfelt um decisions in in wanting someone that was elected before, that could hit the ground running and actually, you know, filled out all the bullet points. It's not that I don't believe, and I just want to make that a public statement, that the other gentlemen that were nominated would not be can, good candidates. But so would have been all the other commissioners that reached out to me on, you know, from public safety. Um, you know, there was at least five, and I think all of them would have been equally good. But the deciding point for me to separate even the um commissioners that reached out to me and that were nominated tonight was the fact that Fernando Viscara was elected. Uh, I think Vincent said three times by this community to serve them. So I just wanted to make that very clear. Um, it's not that I don't think the others are not good candidates and that they don't deserve to have an interview. But that was my deciding, you know, feeling was that they have been elected. They would be nominated by us. They have never been nominated by the community. So with that, I'm I'm happy to do the interviews. If I can just give you some times on Friday, I know that's easier for Vincent and William.
Why don't you?
They interview?
Hold, hold off on that Cindy. We'll, we'll, that'll, staff will take care. I don't want to do that now during our meeting. We have other things to take care of. And I appreciate your com. Uh, I appreciate your comments. Well taken. Uh, but of course, uh, I think uh, uh, you know, we'll all make that determination. And and as it turns out, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Viscar may ultimately be selected. We don't know that. All we're discussing tonight.
No, I know. I know that. It's just I didn't want to, I didn't want to diminish the credibility of the other candidates that came forward by by wanting to make that motion. It's just, I still feel passionate because the gentleman was elected by thousands of votes to the, to the council.
No, I and and I don't, I don't think anybody, I don't think you should feel that way, and I don't think people should take it. We're just talking. And of course, these are all comments that be um discussed and undertaken. Thank you for that. Okay, so, thank you. All right, so we will now move on to item number eleven, update from city manager. Um, uh, something called a COVID nineteen uh update. Is that uh, what do you want to talk about tonight, really?
Uh, very briefly, just um to the comments earlier from the council regarding uh updates on how we would phase our way back into city hall. Yes, absolutely. We will be, I uh, I will be discussing this with each of you individually to talk about um how that plays out. Um, as Mayor Protem Yu pointed out as well, the phasing of this will be important. And we have a lot of other factors as well in terms of the configuration of city hall, how to employ social distancing and other measures as well. So I'll be happy, you know, obviously, this is, this is a team effort together, all of us. Um, the employees, the council, management, and all working together as a team to uh work through this and do this in the safest manner possible. Um, I appreciate everything that staff has done so far, um, that we've had a lot of success. Um, there is shortfalls of the virtual world and uh strengths as well that have showed itself. So we'll talk to you about that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, very briefly, I just want to mention, very briefly, um. Yesterday Sheriff Novile and Aueva did have a press conference and we didn't receive. Uh, unfunded positions, um, some actions that the sheriff's department has taken. And those including our service area lieutenant. I'll be working with the captain uh, to see how that is, works through our operations, but. Um, in terms of continuity of service, there is no issue related to continuity of service, but I'll be working with. The captain to talk to you and then update the councils while as um, and discuss this with you later. Um, as we work through this um, budgetary crisis, both with the county. And with everybody else, all of the hardworking agencies working through. That's it for tonight, Mayor Chavez.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for those comments. So we'll now move on to item number twelve. Number twelve, do we have an update from our city attorney?
Very brief, sir. Um, minor related to COVID nineteen. The Uga California City's City Attorney Division is now hosting a free Friday lunchtime. Uh, webinar covering different matters related to COVID nineteen. This Friday happens to be on labor and employment issues. So. Uh, if we are not holding a special council meeting at lunchtime on Friday, I'll be attending that. Uh, and briefing you on that, uh, potentially at the next meeting. Second item, uh, and to echo what you said, sir, we're all reading the same headlines. We're all watching the same news. Uh, but one thing that I've noticed over the last seven days. Uh, was that our friend Scott, Senator Scott Winter was on the news talking about potential housing bills coming up in the future. Um, and the problem of is density a good thing, or now do we want to discourage density because of this pandemic and the situation we find ourselves in? It'll be very interesting to see what does come through uh, the legislature once they're back in session. Um. Whenever that happens, July, August, uh, and so we'll, we'll be keeping a careful eye on that because I, I know that housing is of great importance to the four of you. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to working with you as we continue through this process.
Perfect. I appreciate your comments. So now we will move on to item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee. Meetings, I believe, uh, there was one uh, standing committee meeting. Uh. Uh, was that uh, councilmembers, uh, councilmember Mann and Mayor Protem Yu? Do you have something to report?
No, I think our meeting is gonna be this Friday.
Oh, okay. All right, I thought that you.
One P M.
Okay, okay. So do we have any other, any other reports from any other uh, ad hoc or standing committee meetings? Okay. We, before leaving this item agenda, we, we do need to do some business. Um, as I mentioned last time, uh. There were a couple of positions that were held by councilmember uh, Fish that we need to fill. And uh, there are two primary ones. Uh, one is the library construction standing committee. And the school district city standing committee. Um, and uh, I would first put out there. For any of my colleagues, if there's any, uh, if anybody is interested in any of those positions that, and would like to be appointed to that. Um, I believe that Councilmember Sternquist is on the library construction standing committee, and Councilmember Mann is currently on the standing committee. Is there anybody? Um, that would like to, who isn't already, obviously, serving on those committees, interested in, in doing so?
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I was just gonna share that I don't think we need the library. Um. What, what was it called again? Library?
It's the library construction standing committee.
You know, we never met, so I don't think we need that. I mean, we were doing it initially when it was for the art piece. So I think we can just stand that one.
Okay, well, if, if, if you, you're, you're on it, if you believe that it's not necessary, we can always uh, reappoint it at some point when it becomes necessary. Um, so based, based on your representation, then I will dissolve the library construction standing committee. Uh, not hearing from anybody, I, I would like to uh, to go back on the school district city standing committee if anybody. Unless anybody has a, a strong interest in, in going on to that, I would, I would like to join Councilmember Mann. As part of that standing committee. Uh, so unless there's any objection, I will go ahead and I guess appoint myself. Okay, so I guess I could do that. Okay, there is one pride, one more item of business, and that is that. Um, uh, Councilmember uh, uh, Fish did, was our, 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 our link or our go-to for the Clean Air Alliance. Um. As you recall, when we joined that, uh, she was selected as the uh, as the uh, member or who was going to be. Uh, the, the representative on the Clean Air Alliance. Uh, I believe that Councilmember Mann is the next line, and I believe. I am the third alternate. Uh, my first question is, Member Mann, are you, uh, would you like to step up into that first position?
Was being alternates, I'm sure you get um, all the emails as well as the meetings and when they're held. And um. I mean, I, I want to be able to devote enough time to do that role fully, and I, I think with my job right now, I. Most of the meetings that the CPA holds, I'm actually unable to attend. So.
William, I, I do share that Nan said that they do them now. Uh, you can call in. So you don't have to physically be there anymore. I think she was calling in for the last. Few meetings. I don't know if she had, from where, but she, she would do it through the telephone. She didn't have to go to downtown L.A. anymore.
Yeah, it's, it's not so much the location, it's sort of the, the time slot in which they have the meeting. Um, so if, say, the CPA meeting ran two to three hours. Um, I don't think I could get away with being, being on a phone two to three hours at my office, unfortunately.
Well, I nominate the mayor then.
Yeah, thank you. I, I. I, I, I actually, unfortunately, have the same problem William has, and that is devoting the time. So here's, here's my, here's my.
I say we give it to the new person.
I, I second that. I second that.
That, that's a good idea.
That's a condition of appointment.
In fact, unless there is any objection, I can, I believe I can hold off on that appointment. Uh, for now. There's no big thing. I know that Brian Cook, our city manager, has offered to. Uh, listen in on some of those meetings if necessary. Uh, there's not a whole lot going on. I know there's a meeting this Thursday. Uh, I, I'm gonna try to do it if I can. If not, I know Brian is, is maybe available to do that as well, but there's nothing really pressing. So I think that's a fantastic idea, and I don't, I don't want to, that, those. Those people nominated may withdraw now from this, uh, I don't. But we'll see. There's no, there's no guarantee that we'll, we'll, it's not, it's not a bad broke board, but it is during the day, and it's difficult for those who work. Uh, to answer that question. All right, so let's hold off on that for now. We'll figure that out probably at our next meeting. Okay. Okay, so uh, that's it, item thirteen, so now we.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Mayor, you have, you have one more appointment, and that is Nan to, to the, to Contract Cities.
Oh, you, you know, I don't, I only had in front of me the standing committee and the ad hoc, reminding me. I know that, that number Fish was uh, the representative to Contract Cities. Who was that? Weren't you the second in line to that, Cindy?
No, I think it was you, and I nominate you again.
Oh, thank you.
May I suggest, uh, it is not urgent, maybe wait till the new council member is seated.
I, I. Like that again. And that's a good idea. And in fact, let me follow up with uh, our city clerk. Uh, because I don't want to do it piecemeal. I'll follow up and, and find out uh, which, other than the standing committee and ad hoc, what we need to fill. And take care of that at the next meeting. I think that would probably be the, the one to. And also. Since we're gonna have a fifth member, we might as well spread that out. And, and you're right, there is no rush. Uh, Contract City going anywhere, and there's. There's no conferences coming up at this point, so I think we're okay. Good, good, good. Okay, so we'll move on to item fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, and I'll begin with Councilmember Mann.
Well, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yeah, um, I don't have too much to, to share. I, I, I do want to. Commend staff for um, distributing all the uh. Lawn signs that uh, we've been putting out in everyone's front yards. They, they look great. Um. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from uh, residents who have received them. And actually, just one, one quick question. Um, do, do we still have signs? Some people were asking about um. Maybe not receiving their signs yet. Um, are, are we at, at a limit? Do we know, or is that just an ongoing thing?
We, we are at a limit. Um, I, if there's some individuals who still didn't get some signs, and if you have those contact, that contact information, just send it over to staff. And we'll see what we can do, but we have a few more left, but not many.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with them again. That was uh, that was like two days ago, so I, I know you guys were handing it um, out over, from Friday over the weekend, so. Uh, so yeah, I, I, I really like the signs. I think they're, they're, they're a great way to kind of show our uh, solidarity and support. Um, for everyone in our community. Um. Stay safe. Um, we're hoping this thing, um. Everyone wants to return to normal as soon as possible, and, you know, today we discussed many things such as the C D B G funds and. Hopefully, you know, I'm, I'm all for, if we can help. And we can help effectively and in the fastest way possible, I think that's what we as uh, elected officials should, should do. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think those lawn signs are gonna be on eBay pretty soon, aren't they? They're bidding on those things. They're, they're popular, very, very nice looking. Uh, they did. So Councilmember Sternquist, would you like to, any, anything separate?
Uh, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the people that reached out by email and um, telephone calls. Willing to serve our community in the role of a city council member. So. I personally want to thank them. I think there was a little bit of miscommunication that it was not a self nomination process, but. That was cleared up, and um, it was actually nice to talk to the people who, who took the time to call and express their interest. So I'm very grateful to them. I'm grateful to all of my colleagues, you on city council. I, I know none of us took this lightly, and there wasn't a lot of thought. Put into that. So um, I look forward to having the interviews. Um, I just would like to ask, Mayor, could you. Possibly just set a time, like when we do our commissioners, so that I can try and schedule it. I know. Um, i- if I have a time slot, then I could possibly work with Peggy to fit that in on a Friday, which I know makes. Things easier for Vince and William.
Yeah, uh, I, I think uh, as I mentioned before, I know staff will get working on that right away and uh. And we'll get some, some time slots and time so that everybody, we want to make it convenient for everybody, obviously. Uh, including the candidates as well. And so, you know, it, it is difficult sometimes putting these together, but. I have confidence the staff will do that and so that we can accommodate everybody. And there's no question that, that we're gonna have everybody there. That, that is not. Not even a question. I, I want to make sure that we all have the opportunity to do what we need to do. So.
Thank you, and I've, yeah, I've already committed to, to doing those meetings. They're challenging enough. Just doing them, teleconferencing, but when you're the chair, it's, it's even more important for you to be able to, you know. Do that. Um, I just want to thank staff also for, you know, their continued hard work. I mean, I have not received. Other than one email, I think that we all received, um, and it was about regarding an Athens employee not wearing masks. While doing work, and it was taken care of immediately. I just think our staff is doing wonderful, a wonderful job, because I have not received one email, one phone call. That something is not being taken care of in our city. So shout out to everybody, and to you too, Brian. I know this is um, challenging for you as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate those comments. So Mayor Protem Yu, any final comments?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, a couple of things. And first of all, I want to go back to the uh, council appointment. Um, I haven't mentioned uh, too many names, and, and I did talk to uh, uh, former Mayor Carl Bloom. Uh, but I just want to make sure that people understand that we, we, just like Councilmember Sternquist said, we, we take this business upon extremely seriously. Uh, we may have different opinion as to how the procedure should be taken out, uh, should be carried out. Um. Personally, actually, I gone through every single one of our uh, commissions. Um, some, may, maybe I don't talk to all of them, but, but, and, and, but I do appreciate those that, that did reach out to some of us. Um, I thank you for, for your offer. Thank you for the enthusiasm in serving the community, but. But um, I did consider each and every one of you. Um, the reason is that um, like outside is reading, I, I really foresee. We're gonna be uh, walking to some very, very difficult climb ahead and needing to make difficult decisions. So that's one. And number two is that tonight, we actually passed or approved the resolution to approve the road funds. And I think that um, we may not have mentioned uh, what, how much fund we might be able to get to S D Y, even though. It's kind of routine. We, we try, try to apply for it every year. Um, we are um, projecting to receive six hundred thousand dollars. And the city would have to have a matching fund of a hundred thousand dollars. So uh, so it's a very good uh, way to. Leverage our city funds. Just want to put it out there, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Um, all right, I'll be brief. Uh, again, you know, I echo uh, most of what my colleagues have said. Uh. You know, from the lawn signs to staff, uh, going above and beyond, uh, you know, uh. Uh, unless you knew otherwise, uh, you know, it's uh, business pretty much as usual. Things are being taken care of for the most part. The city is not crumbling or not falling apart, and uh, and that's, uh, of course, that doesn't happen by itself. Uh, people have to do that, and, and we have, we have the people who are doing it. So, you know, there's no question that uh. A big shout out has to go to Brian, uh, to Greg, to all of our staff. Um, and also, of course, to, to you as council members, uh, to myself. We know that. This is not an easy job. It is not made any easier by all the things that we have to go through, but. But we, we, we know that that is our job, and, 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 and we will do it until somebody tells us we can't. Um, and uh, you know, uh, decisions we've made tonight are always difficult. Um, and I just want to remind those, and, and it's been made mention of other people out there, other commissioners, other people. Who are uh, certainly worthy candidates to be sitting on this council. And uh, you know, it's just something that we need to get going on. We need to move, obviously, but keep in mind that there's an election in two years. So if anybody's interested in, in, in fulfilling this role, uh, you know, our election process is still there as well, so uh, don't forget about that. Um, what else do I want to say? I think that's it. Uh, I just want to uh. Uh, remind everyone that, oh, I know what I wanted to share. I, just real quick. I have, I, there's a, a former judge friend of mine who, who likes to send me little uh, tidbits and emails once in a while and, and, and uh. Um, uh, I just want to share one thing with him. He, he sent me a photo of uh, Rod Sterling. You guys probably are familiar with. Rod Sterling from the Twilight Zone uh, of shows. Uh, and, and it, and, and it says. Imagine if you will. Okay, that's how he always started things. Imagine if you will. A world where Cinco de Mayo falls on Taco Tuesday, only to be ruined by a virus after a Mexican beer. So uh. That's pretty cute.
That is funny.
Cinco de Mayo, and uh, you know, uh, maybe that's a good thing. I don't know, but uh, for all of us out there that are celebrating. Cinco de Mayo, you know, raise a beer for everybody else. So uh, good times are, good times are ahead. Okay, so uh, with that, we will move on to item fifteen, additional public comments on item not listed on the agenda. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any email comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any comments on those who are out there in the, in the audio world listening to us? Okay, hearing none. I will close public comments, and that brings us to item sixteen. That means we are adjourned. So. Thank you all for tonight. Uh, thank you for all participating. Good job. In fact, great job to everybody. And stay safe, stay healthy, and probably in a few days. All right.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mayor.